Everybody ready? All right, I'll go ahead and call to order this public meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners Thursday, January 10th, and we will begin with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make one. So if there's anyone out there who's actually watching this on TV, or perhaps someone in the audience who doesn't know, next week there will be the kickoff for the downtown master plan update process. And this is a pretty big deal, and certainly important for both Missoula and Missoula County. The kickoff meetings will be at the Doubletree Hotel on Monday, and there's two sessions, both of them are identical, so you can show up to either, which makes the most sense for you. Scheduling-wise, one is from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and the other is from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., again at the Doubletree Hotel.
Thanks. Any other announcements? All right, any public comment on items not on today's agenda? And there are no action items on the agenda, and we're talking about mapping, so anything else? All right. Our current claims list received as of December 27th, 2018, to January 3rd, 2019 by the Commissioners' Office, total $1,394,610.76. With that, again, we don't have any action items today, but we do have, on other business, a special presentation on our Missoula area mapping project.
Thank you very much. I'm Andrew Higginmire. I'm a planner with Missoula County Community and Planning Services. Christine, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Christine D'Amico, a planner with CAPS as well.
And we're the team that's been working on the Missoula area mapping project, an effort to update the land use map, which is an element of the Missoula County growth policy. And today's meeting is an informational meeting for the Board of County Commissioners, and an update as well. And thank you for accommodating us on this date. We understand we're the only thing on the agenda, and you didn't have to have us here today, we could've moved it to another date, so we really appreciate you having us. All right, moving on to the presentation. All right, so today's objectives, here are the things that we would like to try to accomplish. We want to identify for the County Commissioners the specific amendment that we're bringing, what specifically we are bringing forward as an amendment. We want to do a big review of the project to date, so back from the very beginning until today, of what's occurred. We want to review the major themes that we've, that we have in the land use map, and we also want to be able to answer your questions, whatever comes up. The presentation outline is we'll start with what specifically is the amendment, we'll review the key events, which I'll sort of refer to as phases of the project as we move through the presentation. We'll discuss the public directives, what the public told us they wanted to see in the land use map, and then we'll discuss those key themes. Any questions at this point of the presentation? Say none, I'll move forward. So what is the proposed amendment? We're actually, it's, there's a lot of talk about a land use map, but what we're actually doing is we're bringing forward more than just a land use map, we're going to bring forward what's called the Missoula area land use element. So this element is, it's a, it's a, it does a number of things. First of all, what it's doing is, it has a section that's just context, it describes the vision that the people who participated in the project had for the mapping area, and provides the context on what they value and what their ideas are on growth and development. But policy-wise, what it also does is it describes the land use designations. So we have 15 land use designations in the land use map, but you need a description of them, you need text to describe what those mean, so the land use element has that text. And then there's a, there's also an implementation component, we're recommending certain actions be taken to implement the map. And then finally, we have the map itself. So that package is the Missoula land use element that we're proposing as the growth policy amendment. So next topic is the key events, the timeline, the, how the, the process to date, a review of the process to date. First phase was setting the stage, then we, the second phase moved into a discussion on values and ideas and growth and development. The third phase was developing a concept map, and then after the concept map, we worked on a public working draft, and now we're in the adoption process, the phase five of the project. So phase one, setting the stage. At its root, what we did at this phase, we started the process by the plan-to-plan, as Karen would call it. We figured out exactly how we wanted to do this project. We started pretty generally, we bounced off different ideas, different strategies, we sort of settled on a game plan for moving forward. That was done just internally, through staff, it was essentially the first few, three, four months of the project really, was thinking about how we wanted to do the land use map update. The first real topic of discussion that we introduced with the Commissioners and other members of the public was what the planning boundary was. The planning boundary, it's odd because it's centered around, it's an odd shape that centers around the city of Missoula, is like a donut. But there was a, there was a reasoning to that planning area boundary. This land use map is a, it's a policy guidance document for our zoning that we have in Missoula County. And that area, we wanted to make sure we encompassed all the part-two zoning that Missoula County, it's the county-administered zoning, we wanted to make sure all of the county-administered zoning was within this land use map boundary. Second thing is, the city of Missoula is surrounded by a series of, I think either 11 or 13 neighborhood plans, that set the policy foundation for land use within this area. We wanted to try to encompass as much of that, those neighborhood plans as we possibly could. And the third consideration was we wanted to capture areas where we believe there will be high growth rates in the future, and so that would be areas like Bonner and East Missoula, which are not, parts of those communities are not zoned and do not have a neighborhood plan, and then out at the Smurfet Stone Mill site. That's how we kind of arrived on that boundary for the planning area. The reason why we focused on the Missoula area first is we looked at the guidance and the growth policy, and it calls for updating the map for Missoula County in sections, so not all in one, one big swoop. Which makes sense because we have very different issues in our rural part of Missoula County versus our urban part of Missoula County. If you look at where growth is happening in Missoula County, about 80% of it happens between the Y and Bonner, in that area. That includes the city of Missoula when you total it up countywide, but still the vast majority of growth that we see, and the issues we see in our office, are within this area. So it really made sense to focus on this Missoula area first, before we go out and have conversations with the rural communities about what they want to see in their land use map. So that was a big part of the setting the stage. The next big, the biggest part of phase one was drafting the planning area profile. The planning area profile is, it's a combination of an existing conditions document and a trends document. We convened what we called the Land Use Technical Committee, this was a group of citizens and also government officials from places like the city and the county, that we used as sort of a sounding board for helping draft the planning area profile. So with the planning area profile, its main purpose was, when we started this process, we realized that we didn't have a really good grip on what the future looked like, what land use trends going forward were possible, what was occurring. And so what we did was we researched, we, you know, we did a ton of research on what are the hot land use trends, what are the things that are happening throughout this country, in communities, in community development, in community building. And then we would take it to the technical committee, and we would, we would write a report for them that would, that would focus on either commercial, residential, or industrial land use, and say, this is a trend that, that we see happening throughout this country. Is it happening here? Is it possible that it's happening here? If it is happening here, if it's possible that it's happening here, how do we think about it in context of our land use map? Remember that we want this land use map to be a future land use map, this is a vision for what we want our community to look like in our future. So we shouldn't be planning for the uses, land uses we have today, or had 20 years ago, we should really be thinking about what the land uses are tomorrow. So that's what, that planning area profile really did. An example of one of the things that we identified, that's pretty easy to explain, is retail. In retail, in commercial land use, 20, 30 years ago was all about building malls. And we have a mall here, and it's doing just fine. But then it evolved, and so basically in the 90s and in the 2000s, it was all about building these power centers. And what a power center is in a real estate term is, it's essentially North Reserve. It's these big, huge square footage stores, all sort of concentrated together with some other uses sort of sprinkled in, but it's mainly about big retail, auto-centric, regional and, and regional, like places like Target and Walmart, and big regional stores. So that was sort of the trend throughout the United States, throughout the 90s and the 2000s. And what we're seeing now, the future of retail, from this point going forward, is what, what we're seeing is the malls are pretty much gone. Ours is still viable, but they're working on reinventing themselves, and they're working on reinventing themselves on the lines of what we're, what we're seeing here. What, what we're seeing is the malls are pretty much gone, people are not building malls anymore. People are not really building power centers anymore, that's not really a thing that you see a lot of real estate investment occurring in. The future of retail is, are these places called lifestyle centers, is what the terms they're using. It's, it's mixed use, so it's got commercial, it's got residential, it's got office space, it's got a high, high level of amenities, like parks, trails, amphitheaters, whatever amenities that the developer can kind of create for that facility. And so we, we explained this to the technical committee, we said malls, power centers, we have those things, but they're kind of in the past, futures, these mixed-use lifestyle centers, do we have them here in Missoula, or could we? And what we pointed out to them, and what they pointed out too, is that yes, these things are happening here in Missoula. Lifestyle centers, think of the old Sawmill District that's going in right now, that is the perfect example of the future of retail. Mix of uses, residential, commercial, office space, high amenities, you've got a ballpark, you've got trails, you've got a boat launch, that is exactly what a lifestyle center is. Another one that's planned is the Riverfront Triangle. So these are definitely trends that are happening nationally that we're seeing here too. The question is, is are those things, do we need to plan for them in the county? That's sort of the question that we just talked about as a technical committee, and you know, what we did was we kind of defined, yeah, that was something that was going to be in the county, or yeah, that wasn't. The lifestyle centers, we kind of teetered on, but I think in the land use map, you might see some spots where that's a possibility in the future. And the last part of phase one was the visioning. We held, in two of our communities, two of our neighborhoods within this planning area have never had a neighborhood plan, the East Missoula area and the Bonner Milltown/West Riverside area. So we really felt that it was important to go out there and individually with those communities, do a little bit of visioning with them. What exactly do they want as a community? What do they want their community to look like in the future? So in both those communities, we, I think it was two or three meetings we held, and we created a vision with them, and those community councils have accepted those visions, and so they, they are part of the, you know, the, the, part of the fabric of those community councils now. So we have a little bit of idea what, what East Missoula wants to be in the future, what Bonner Milltown wants to be in the future. Because all those, most of the rest of the area is sort of covered by a neighborhood plan, so they already have made that statement. So that's phase one. When we, we finished phase one in March, yeah, the very beginning of March of 2018. And then we moved into phase two. And in phase two, we sort of phased out the use of the technical committee, they had sort of served their purpose in drafting this planning area profile, and now it was really a conversation that we needed to have with the public. When we created, when we set out the plan-to-plan for this, we really wanted to have a process that was focused on values. There's lots of ways to do planning, but we wanted to do this in a value, focused on values. And so outreach, phase, phase two is really an outreach process, to get an idea of what people valued in our community, and what their ideas on growth and development are. And so we had, we had five workshops that we held, one of them downtown during the day, but the rest of them were in the communities in the evening. We held a ton of stakeholder meetings, we also had an interactive map that people could go and leave comments on. And our goals of this phase of the project was to identify what people's values were, and identify what people's ideas in growth and development were. When we had completed that, and evaluated those comments that we'd received, we moved on to phase three. Excuse me. Phase three was the development of a concept map. So the idea behind the concept map was, we didn't want to go out and have a conversation about the community's values, and go right to a draft land use map. What we needed to do is we needed to go back to the public and say, this is what you said, and show them, this is what you had said, are we headed in the right direction? So it's a very general map, you see there on your screen, it's, I mean, you're, even at that terrible scale, you can see it's just some blobs, not a ton of detail, but it kind of showed, went back to the people who have participated, or are participating, and said, this is what you were saying, are we headed in the right direction? So that was the purpose of the, the concept map. We had four open houses, what we did was, one of the workshops was not well-attended, so we didn't go back to that, to that neighborhood when, in this round. So we had four open houses, and then we also had the interactive map available again, so people could comment. And then we also held a bunch of stakeholder meetings with people on the, on the concept map. So again, the goals were to show, show everyone what was said, and have an understanding with this concept map if we were moving in the right direction. So the feedback was, peers, you're moving in the right direction. So we got the go-ahead from the public to continue. So that led to phase four, which was the development of the public working draft. So with this, with the public working draft, staff, staff, using all the feedback we had gotten today, staff worked to create this draft, put together the land use designation. So at that time, our first, our first chunk was, stab was the land use, the land use map and the designations, and then we, we added on the rest of the element to that. And our first step was to check in with the stakeholders that we had been meeting throughout this process, and see if, if we were headed in the right direction. If our stakeholders were telling us no, then we knew that we would need to turn around and go back before we spent a bunch of effort with a big, general process with the public. So we got, we got good responses from our stakeholders on the public working draft, and then, so we held three open houses. Again, one of the communities, every time, one of the communities hadn't responded well in the previous round, so we, we would narrow our, our number of open houses, but we held the, we had the open houses, and we had the interactive map up once again, so people could leave comments on the, the map. And so our goals in this round of outreach was to gather feedback on that draft, on, on the land use map, the land use designations, and the element as a whole. So the public got to see all of those things. And our goal was to refine and get a better draft before we went to the planning board. So this was the public's working draft. So after, after moving through that process, and it really seemed appropriate to move forward, we weren't running into red flags, we are now in the adoption phase. And so at this phase, our outreach will be focused on public hearings. We'll have a public hearing next week on January 15th with the planning board, and then, once the planning board has made their recommendation, we will schedule a public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. So the goals of this will be, you know, to have a discussion about some of these, these issues, maybe that aren't 100% resolved, have a good public discussion about them, and come to a resolution on those issues, and then make some revisions and fine-tuning to the document, and then hopefully work towards adoption. So, as promised, talking about public directives that came out of this process. So as I said, this is value-driven, but the, the real foundation of this land use map is what people wanted to see. We really wanted this land use map to be a reflection of the community's values. And so we're, in the land use element, as you'll see, that's what we're calling the foundation, the people's values and ideas on growth and development. So overall, we've had a, we've had a very robust public outreach program, and we've, we've felt like we've done a very good job at reaching out to the different segments that might represent the Missoula, the areas of interest of the Missoula community. Knowing that not every interest group maybe shows up to a public workshop at 7:00 p.m. in the evening, we diversified our outreach efforts by also having the outline on the online mapping system, to give people an opportunity to participate out of the comfort of their home, and not necessarily having to come to a meeting, and we weighed those equally. And then we've also, you know, knowing that certain segments of the population might not even be represented within those capacities, we, we reached out to as many different stakeholder groups that we could possibly think of. So at least 15 public workshops, open houses, and visioning sessions throughout the whole process, three rounds of online mapping, I, I couldn't count the, the number of stakeholder meetings, but it has to measure in dozens, and then we've also did five planning board updates. And so that led us to these things. It's a lot of text, sorry about this, but it's important. These are the public directives. On the left-hand side, we have the values that we identified out of, out of this process, and the ideas for growth and development. The values are, provide additional housing, use existing infrastructure for our development, protect agriculture, protect open spaces, promote multimodal transportation, protect water quality, preserve community identity. I doubt any of these things surprise any of us, but it's good, we got confirmation, right? And then the ideas, oh, yes.
Are they listed in order of frequency, or?
There's, that is, there's no order to that list, they are all equally important, yeah. And then the idea, and same with this, ideas, all equally important. So ideas, these, these came out of comments, but people wanted to see, clustering development, creating walkable places, plan for new infrastructure, live-make. So what live-make is, the idea is that you can live on a property and have a business on that same property, and that really came out of East Missoula. Connectivity, that's connectivity in a number of different ways, it's connectivity between neighborhoods and the rest of the community, but also connectivity for wildlife, wildlife habitat, rural character, and then avoiding hazards, so steering growth from, away from our areas where we have known hazards. Yeah.
Toss something out, looking at this and hearing, you're doing great, and it's very interesting and compelling. Interesting that we hold at the same time, use existing infrastructure and plan for new infrastructure.
Yeah, that's really, and I'll get into that a little bit more, because what we found is that we're going to need a little, we're going to need additional infrastructure, is what we found. And so a certain, certain segments of the community were saying, this map looks good, but we, we're, we need some infrastructure to accommodate our future development as well, and so we need to think about that. And I'll point that stuff out in a little bit. So the question is, how do we use this information in our land use map, these ideas and these values? And I didn't get into the realities of the landscape, but the realities are things like, we are going to grow by a certain amount, we have a geographically constrained location, the valley, in, between the valley and the rivers and the mountains, we have an increasing, we're increasing home prices, things like that, those are sort of the realities. But the values, between those three things, the values, realities, and ideas, they make up our imperatives. These are our key strategies, and this is still pretty general, but the key strategies that we had to think about when we were drawing the land use map. And so the, the key strategies were make sure that our values are represented in the land use map. I would hope someone could look at the values in this document, and then look at the land use map, and say, yeah, I, I see what they're saying, I can see how we, where our values are here in this land use map, I can imagine that. We want to, an imperative is, we want to make sure there's a range of housing types and supply, so we don't want to rely on just a single type of housing in the future for our community, we want to have a range of housing types in our community in the future. We want to use the infrastructure we have. Priority number one for, for where we're targeting growth and development in the future is use the infrastructure that we have in place. But what we found is, in county, there aren't a ton of areas where we have that combination, that sweet spot of sewer, water, and roads. And because of that, we need to identify a few areas proactively, according to this map, where we want those things in the future. So we need to plan for some new infrastructure in the future as well. And then finally, quality of life, always important, always needs to be a part of any planning process. So the, the themes, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I kind of organize this by value, again, values, again, it's a little text-heavy, but you know, I'll walk you through it verbally as well. So the housing, that, we need housing, that value, what we've done is emphasize a variety of housing types and supply. So you'll see in there, there's a little LD and LM. The land use designations, that's the text, so that's where you might see that value come out in, and the LM is in the map. And so in this situation, what we've done is, in the land use designations, we've provided for land use designations that can allow the mixing of housing types, so it's not all single-family maybe everywhere in the planning area, but we have areas where you can do duplexes and triplexes and apartment buildings, as well as single-family. So that would help, give us that variety of housing that we need. And then the supply is, we need to make sure enough of the, there's enough land area in the map for our housing needs going forward. For existing infrastructure, that focused growth towards an existing infrastructure value, our, our strategy was to focus on compact development patterns. In the locations where we have that sweet spot, roads, sewer, and water, that's where we want to have compact development patterns. For protecting agriculture, we think that using compact development patterns in those places where we have the infrastructure can help protect agriculture, by not putting growth pressure in areas where we, where we have the agricultural resources we want to try to protect. But then we've also included an agricultural land use designation, which is a first thing, this is a new thing for the county that we haven't had before in the past. We also are really emphasizing the use of clustering to, you know, say if you've got 10 acres, might not use just part of that 10 acres for your development, and leave the rest open for a resource like agriculture. We also are suggesting the use of incentives. So if you, if you do something to permanently protect a resource or value, like soils that are, that are, that we've deemed important in our community, that you, you can get some sort of incentive, perhaps, well, we're calling it a density bonus, so maybe you get a couple extra houses that you get to work with, to help, to incentivize that permanent protection of that resource. For protecting the open spaces in the community, and this is, open spaces is related to wildlife, wildlife habitat, as well as just being able to look out at the hill and see a, you know, out the window and see a green hill. Again, compact development pattern's really important to, if we focus our development where we have that infrastructure, that puts pressure off of other areas. And then we also use land use designations that are low-density, like our ag land use designations, and our working land designations, and our open resource designation, as well as those clustering and, clustering and incentives. Clustering can be used to protect wildlife habitat, and incentives could be used to incentivize its protection, as well as public access could be a potential use. There's a lot of potential uses with the clusterings and incentives, to try to protect those values. Promoting multimodal transportation, and people really, really talked a lot about the ability to walk and ride their bike, that was really, really important. But people also talked a lot about congestion. And so we lumped this value into the multimodal transportation concept, where to try to address some of these issues, using the land use map to put housing near employment centers. So you'll see that especially along the I-90 corridor, where we tried to find areas for housing where we have our industrial land bases. As well as integrating in the land use designations, having a, a section- As well as integrating in the land use designations, having a section that integrates the land use with our mobility and access considerations. So we have a tendency in the past to not look at what our transportation systems look like, given the land use that surrounds it. But we know that our transportation system directly affects what our land use patterns look like, and our land use patterns directly affect what our transportation system looks like. And so we've taken a step to start integrating those two together with the mobility and access considerations in the land use designations. So what those will describe is things like how we want the road grid to look, how big the block sizes we want to be, what the pedestrian bike facilities should look like. Water quality, to protect water quality, we, the strategy we employed was protecting our floodplains, keeping, avoiding development within our floodplains. And then using in our land use designations, talking about buffers and setbacks from important natural features. So if an area could develop, we could use zoning to keep things set back from that natural feature. And then preserve community identity. Well, this was sort of an interesting one because all the communities have unique identities, and they want to maintain that unique identity, and there's not really a way to universally do that in one swoop. But it was by listening to the different communities and trying to give them what they asked for in terms of their densities. So that was using the land use map when they talked about, we want a community center here, we want some commercial here, we want to have this low density, we want to have more homes, trying to listen to them and trying to do that in the land use map for those communities. And then also, we also wanted to try to have areas of lower density near all of our communities, whether they wanted to be low density or they wanted to be high density, but having, because that's a really, I think, most people that live in this area, we all have very similar connections to our natural landscapes around us. And by having low-density areas around all the community centers, the neighborhood centers, we're trying to maintain, you know, everyone gets to look out and see an open mountainside, kind of the idea. So those were the values, those are how we tried to incorporate them into the land use map and through the different strategies. And then here are our infrastructure, our key themes on implementation, I'm sorry, our implementation themes. Because loud and clear, the message was loud and clear throughout this process is you don't just draft a land use map and put it up on the wall and walk away. This has to be implemented. This is not just a policy you just put on a shelf. So that was from all facets of our community. So here are some infrastructure or implementation steps that we've identified. In, it's sort of split into three categories, codes, infrastructure, and then coordination. So in codes, step one, update our zoning regulations, the text of our zoning regulations. This process has identified what's important to the community and what we want our look, community to look like in the future. The zoning regulations should implement that, that's a tool to implement that. And so they need to be aligned. And so we're going to be starting a process here and very soon, this, you know, in a few months, to align our zoning regulations with our community's goals and values. It's very exciting. Next implementation step is updating our subdivision regulations. We need some tweaks in our subdivision regulations to align them with the land use map. It's nothing significant, it's easily done in-house. And then finally, the zoning map, because this land use map should influence the zoning map. Actually, it's actually a requirement that it influences the zoning map. You use, if you're changing your zoning, you move towards the land use map, not away from it. So there are places, we're hoping to identify places within the planning area where we have the infrastructure in place today, where the community wants to see development occur today, that maybe we could proactively rezone, work with the landowners so the county would take on that initiative to proactively rezone those locations, helping to get some housing and jobs where we want them. Another opportunity to do some zoning work on the zoning map is zoning the unzoned areas. There is a big chunk of this planning area that is unzoned, so if we want to do these things that we've identified in our land use map, this would be one way to do it, by zoning those areas. How we do that, we still have to figure out. There are some communities that want zoning now, and some maybe that don't, but that's a conversation for after this is adopted. The next step is infrastructure. We can use infrastructure to implement this land use map. We can, we can use it to proactively guide where we want growth to occur. And so it's been my observation through this process that as of recently, at least in the last decade or so, Missoula County has not been proactively planning where we want infrastructure to go to guide growth. So we're suggesting we start doing that more. Where we have done it, it's been more reactive. Issues have arisen, and so we've run in to put in infrastructure to address those issues. So we have identified in the land use element, I couldn't possibly put them on the slide, a number of potential, and we've worked with our public works department to do this, identify a number of potential infrastructure projects to do to implement the land use map. We're not suggesting all of them be done or all of them are feasible, but it's potential guide for us, it's a guide for us. And then we recognize that infrastructure improvements are expensive to build, and they're also expensive to maintain over time. And so we talk a lot about funding. We've identified different funding mechanisms, and we've stated that each one of these infrastructure improvements would have to be evaluated on a funding level too, to make sure it makes sense and that the county can, you know, get its return on investment, that we're not pouring money down a rabbit hole or something and put a infrastructure project in. And finally, a really important piece is coordination. We are tasked with essentially planning for growth in an area that could perhaps be the city of Missoula and not to the distant future in certain locations. And so we really want to make sure we're on the same page as the city in different ways. We've worked very well with city staff on this project, and they have been very involved and are well aware of what we're proposing. So that's a good step. We also think that the Urban Growth Commission, which hasn't been very active and hasn't been very utilized lately, there's an opportunity to maybe use that Urban Growth Commission to have good public dialogue about how the city and county are coordinating on issues. So that stuff's on the record more. There's a lot of comments that we don't coordinate. We coordinate all the time, we coordinate a lot of different ways. So that would be an opportunity to do that. We're also suggesting a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county for this, these edge areas around the city of Missoula, where we kind of identified what our shared values are or our shared goals are, but what, identify what we have in common for, and what we were looking for in our built environment around these areas. I think there's a lot of value in just having the conversation that leads to MOU, this that exercise of the, creating the MOU would have, I think, really good sideboard, side effects by doing that, sitting down with the city and really talking about that. But it also could be used something as a tool over the long term, like maybe the Urban Growth Commission could look at projects through the lens of the MOU, and how does this project meet our shared objectives, our shared goals? And finally, joint master planning. There are some locations within the planning area where, that are really important, I think, to the long-term growth of the community, that could happen one way or another way right now, even with this land use map. And I think the two sides of the fence here, the city and the county, both agree it'd be better to happen one way, and we're both on the same page as that. And it would be, make a lot of sense to sit down and do some master planning for those areas. The primary target would be from that area between the airport east to reserve. That's where the build grant was, where we tried to get the bill grant to put in the infrastructure. But with all of the, all of the potential, the growth potential in the area, and then the resources that we have, and the potential for, you know, restoring Grant Creek and protecting ag lands and managing around the airways of the, you know, the airpass of the airport, a joint man, joint visioning, master planning exercise between the city and the county could be extremely beneficial and really, really set the foundation for what could possibly be a fantastic neighborhood. So in the map, some of the key themes, and these are more esoteric or theoretical, but compact development patterns were very important to the, to the organization of this land use map. We really tried to focus our future growth in areas in compact development patterns. We have a constrained valley in the long term, that's how we need to grow is in compact ways. We wanted, we wanted to limited, limit the expansions on these low-density areas, these areas primarily of the, you know, these half-acre, one-acre land use patterns that are functioning on septic and wells primarily. There's plenty of that out there in the land use designations. It's because we already have so much of it on the landscape, and it's not a very efficient land use, especially in an area that's constrained in a valley like we have. So we wanted, there's plenty of opportunity for those, for that type of housing already on the landscape. We didn't really need to expand it, is what I'm getting at. We wanted to protect public lands, and you'll see that really dark green is focused towards protecting our public lands and keeping those public. And then at a 40,000-foot level, we wanted the land use map so you could look at it from here, and it made sense. If you looked at our current land use map that we have, where there are, within this area, there are over 30-some designations, and it's a mess. And I truly believe that if it's relatable and easy to understand, it will be used more, and more people understand the vision, and we'll have a better, we'll have a better future because of it. So that's the, that's a big picture. Hopefully you can see some of those things I talked about in the land use map, but it might take a little bit more evaluation over your time. But you really see that the growth is focused on the I-90 corridor out to the Y. And that was based on all these things that we talked about. So next steps, we'll have a hearing from the planning board next Tuesday, and it's, we'll see how that goes. I mean, there might be more than one hearing, there might be a continuation, it might move on in one meeting, we'll just see how it goes. But once that's done, once they've made a recommendation, then it comes to you. Finally, that's it. I hope you guys have some questions. I talked for a really long time, I'm sorry. There's a lot of really important things here.
No, that's great, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Do either of you have questions?
Thanks, Andrew. This is a good piece of work, so look forward to it coming to fruition eventually. So could you talk a little bit about how climate change or climate resiliency played into either the map, well, played into the element, let's just leave it at that?
Yeah, I think that one of the key, you know, talking with our, you know, our, what is her title, Diana, her title slipped in my brain right now. But two things, and it really comes to hazards. Keeping development away from the areas that potentially, where we have elevated risk of wildfire. So that's sort of addressed in the land use map. In the, in the element, you'll see, under the big idea that we have, which is sort of the vision, we identify different roles that the county should take in, we're seeing, let me step back, this, people don't see a county Missoula and a city Missoula in this, that people that live in this area, they just see Missoula, and they want it all to be a great place. But there are two jurisdictions that plan for it. That's a reality we have to just accept. And so recognizing that it's really about the place Missoula and not about the county Missoula, but we can really only control the county Missoula, we identify these different roles that the county should do to, that are complementary to the city and create, help create this great place. One of our roles, I really feel, as the county is, is protecting public health and safety. And so we really tried to limit the development potential or steer growth away from those areas where we have hazards, like in the wildfire areas. That's one thing, but we also wanted to keep development clear of our floodplains, and that hopefully will do a couple of things, but protect that water quality, which I'm not an expert in this stuff, but it might become more scarce over time. The third thing is integrating that mobility, integrating the transportation into, more into the land use map and the land use designations, that mobility and access piece. Vehicle miles traveled, car emissions are contributed to greenhouse gases. So if we can have a more compact community where there are more opportunities for shorter view trips, you know, if the people live near where they work, they drive fewer miles. And having areas where, that are walkable, that they can walk to a store. So even in our more dense, in our denser residential land use designations, we're trying to incorporate ways for commercial uses to be built within those areas by right, that don't have to go through some crazy neighborhood process, but that they make sense and they fit the character and context of that neighborhood, and they can happen. So there are some mix of uses even with our residential zone. So that's, that's something on the lens of it. And there, it's sort of a really hard thing to measure, I don't know how we, how we can, but there's been reports that have said that we lose something like 25% of our workforce drives out of the Missoula area every day, that commutes from outside the Missoula area. So if we can increase our housing supply in the places where we want it, maybe we can recapture some of that workforce. Maybe they want to live, I'm sure there's plenty of people that want to live in the Bitterroot and see those beautiful mountains, I don't blame them. But maybe there's people that are living down there because they can't afford the Missoula area, and so we can recapture some of those people. So maybe, I mean, those are a lot of vehicle miles traveled right there, people going outside the area. So those were, those were kind of the, our ideas, yeah.
Thanks, I really want to echo what Dave said too, great work and a great presentation. And I was able to go to a couple of these, a couple of these, I don't know the right word for it, but where citizens went up and put tax on maps and talked things out, and those were really well done too, so good job all around. I just had a couple of questions, comments. So you talked about this not just being a plan, but being implemented. So does that mean, am I rightly anticipating that later you're going to come back to us with some proposals for new subdivision regulations and new zoning?
That's correct. And you'll, the process to update our zoning regulations, we have someone under contract to do that, and that is going to be starting very soon, to update our zoning regulations. And a huge part of what they're doing is they're going to be doing an audit of our current zoning regulations to making sure, to see how it does and does not align with this land use map. So we have, this land use map has some elements that kind of are business as usual, but it has some new ideas too, and it's, it is, I would not say that we just plopped land uses on top of the old land uses and said, ah, good enough, business as usual. We've come up with some, I think, really different ideas. And so we could see some really different things come out of our zoning regulations in time because of it. Our subdivision regulations is more maintenance level, it's not too intense. But also, yeah, I would see those things coming in soon, you know? I mean, we're already starting the zoning work, so yeah. We have to wait until the zoning text is done before we can really tackle the map, the zoning map.
So you mentioned the Urban Growth Commission?
Yeah.
And obviously, pretty new here, but had been involved in public affairs forever, I never even heard of it.
Yeah, they-
You guys fluent in the Urban Growth Commission?
It's been quite absent.
Okay. So, so give me a little rundown on what it is and what, on your personal recommendation, or two of you, how do we, how do we reinvigorate this thing?
Yeah, so I could get this wrong, so if any staff want to jump in or commissioners want to jump in and correct me, I believe the Urban Growth Commission came out of an inter-local agreement when there was a joint planning staff for the city and county, and they split. And so that, I'm getting, okay, I'm on the right track. The inter-local established this Urban Growth Commission to discuss these things. I don't know why it doesn't meet very often, because they, there's a schedule on how often they're supposed to meet, and they often cancel those meetings. I'm thinking is because we talk all the time, and so there's not really a need, there's not, there's not really this need to, for these people to get together, but, I mean, yes, please, Cola.
I have a comment on that as well. I think the staff meet a lot between the county and the city, but one of the reasons the UGC ended up not being quite useful in a suggestion for moving forward and making it better, is it was like the chair of the commission, the president of city council, the rest of the commission didn't hear any of it, city council, you know, and so it was, and it was the planning officers, and so it was a very small group, and then that never got communicated with city council or the commission. So I think it's important, if we do reinvigorate it, that all the policymakers participate and hear those conversations or have those conversations, or that it's brought back to those policymaking bodies to have the discussions. But I think the discussions have been very well done at the staff level, and it never has really gotten up to the policy level consistently through the UGC.
And I think as you very accurately identified, outside of- And I think, as you very accurately identified, outside of the wooie and the floodplain, the areas that are going to see the most change in the near term are right in this, right in this urban growth, right on the edge of the peri-urban area, and that's the area that's going to take a lot of thoughtful consideration. So, I really hope we can invigorate this thing.
There's, there's, I, I'm, what I'm really excited about with this document and the process of creating this document, is we've been talking so much with our counterparts of the city about this, and some of these coordination efforts have caught on, they've spread, you know, as in our conversations, and they're starting to get a life of their own, and I've been at meetings where all of a sudden I hear a city council member say something about it, like a joint master planning effort and things like that, and so, it's, we have a, we, there's some momentum right now, and I think there's a, like a, we, we might have this really amazing opportunity to try to capitalize on some of these things. So, in, in terms of implementation, right now, the draft kind of guesses at where they should be, and we, they, they might be ill-placed in the terms of priorities. We might want to, through this process, adjust the priorities, and then, you know, a follow-up effort would be, once this is adopted, to sit down with county staff, talk about work plans for the caps and how to expend our energy, and to start working on some of these coordination efforts.
Has there been, I guess this is for you guys, who are, an MOU in the past with the city around this peri-urban area?
Maybe that's a good segue for you, Andrew, to talk about specifics of this MOU as opposed to the inter-local that we currently have.
So, I don't know a ton about the inter-local, but I think it kind of guides the U, the Urban Growth Commission. But what I was envisioning is this memorandum of understanding, obviously, is non-binding, but it, it sort of says, we, the city, and we, the county, both value compact development patterns, multimodal transportation, preservation of agricultural lands, whatever, whatever we, like, we decide to have in there. And so, it, it, it really, a huge part of the value of it is it forces us to publicly talk about these things on where we're on the same page, which I think is a great exercise to, to come into agreement on different projects. I think it could spin out, having these conversations, we could realize, oh, boy, we should do this thing. So, it could end up identifying things that the city and the county can work together on. And then, having that MOU could be a, a conversation point for, for the different planning departments, for the different governing bodies to, to base their conversations on, and it came, I, I've just seen it used, City of Helena, I used to live in Helena, and as a consultant wrote the Lewis and Clark County, kind of, very similar document to this, and it, they had a MOU, and it was just really helpful in that process, and it did that very, very similar thing. So, we could look to other jurisdictions on exactly how they framed it, but I, I just think it would be a really interesting, fruitful opportunity to, and exercise for the two jurisdictions. Yeah.
And we do have, I know Tim Worley had worked on a document about subdivisions kind of in the fringe, because city and county standards are different, and if we know they're going to annex it at some point, really looking at, how can we coordinate better and make it, make more sense if we're approving a subdivision, but it's going to be annexed into the city so that it's not against all their regulations? So, we've done some sorts of coordinating documents in the past like that as well, but maybe we could fold some of those previous concepts into a larger picture.
That's, that's a potential implementation step, is what we want to do is we want to cor, like tie our infrastructure standards to our land use map. So, if you are doing an urban, if you were in an urban land use designation, you build your subdivision to the urban standards, because it's supposed to be an urban place. That's tying your, your, your transportation network to your, to your land use. That's a step. And that's a pretty, we don't need to rewrite our standards, just, just, that's a pretty easy fix for us to be able to do.
And within this MOU and the Urban Growth Commission, really start talking about, say, the dirty word of annexation.
Yeah.
Making, making this a predictable thing for neighbors, and like what you were just saying, we build an area outside of the city limits as if it would be within at some point, and let people who live in that area know what are the factors that come into play for this to actually become a part of the city. So, it becomes predictable and understandable.
Yeah, and, and, and it's out there for the public to understand.
Yeah, and I'd love to see it be driven by planning rather than be driven by development.
Hmm, yeah.
That's just me talking, sorry.
Karen?
I was just going to clarify the distinction between the inter-local and the concept of the MOU. And the inter-local is kind of the business agreement between the city and the county on how we share a planning board and what their functions are, and how the planning fund is split between the two jurisdictions. So, it's kind of more the business agreement between the jurisdictions. This is intended to be more that visionary conceptual idea. There may be some agreements about roles and responsibilities as part of that, but it's kind of more that broad-based, not so much business-oriented agreement, but, but thinking, how can we work together and kind of achieve that vision for the future? So, that's kind of the distinction between the two, if that helps.
Thanks.
That is helpful.
Great. This is a joke. How about we combine the city and county planning departments?
Has that ever been done?
Yes.
That was a joke.
Back and forth and back and forth, maybe it's time to go back again, right? Were there any other questions?
You do know we're on TV.
Not a question, but I'm just super excited at particularly the implementation piece. I don't think anyone in the community, and certainly, I don't think any of the three of us up here want to waste our time and energy on creating yet another plan that just gathers dust or turns into a, a doorstop. So, I think the strategies that you've outlined for implementation are, are right, right on, on point and spot on, and, and that includes zoning. I think it's maybe at times been easy in the past to, to flinch when it comes to the zoning piece, and maybe we've walked on eggshells at times when we've considered that possibility, but I think this would provide a great roadmap to actually make that happen, and I think that would head off of the past, some of the, some of the rancor that we see at the actual development or subdivision phase by getting this clear and transparent upfront. One other comment, and Lee, you heard this from me over in East Missoula the other night, but I would certainly encourage the public to come out and weigh in on what they like about a plan like this. More often than not, the folks that we hear from, doesn't look like we're here, hear from too many people today, but more often than not, we hear from folks who don't like this or that, and I think it's equally important and sometimes overlooked to actually come out and support something that you like, so.
So, you know, I've been on the job all of seven days, and I keep finding myself wanting to say just what Cola and Dave said, so I don't know.
That's good.
I guess that's good. Can I be like them someday? So, I'm echoing what Dave said. I want to encourage you to go fearlessly forward, and I think some of what has held us back in the past is a certain natural uncomfort with people who are really mad at you. And you guys have gone through this huge process and collected all kinds of information and worked on this for countless hours, and there will be people who will get really mad because they don't like what you're saying, who haven't been privy to the thousands of hours of work, et cetera, and that our goal in this is to really do the right thing, not by us so much, but by the people who are going to come after us, and that means being all right with people who are going to be mad. And this is going to make people mad, and it's going to make people really happy. So, go forth fearlessly.
Thank, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, thank you. This has been a huge investment of your time, and you guys have done fantastic work, and we definitely appreciate it. And for the public who may not know, the zoning, we did do some Phase 1 zoning updates. This will be with the consultant moving on to Phase 2, but we have budgeted $150,000 for the consultant for this year to do zoning work. So, it is an investment of the public and for the public to really try to realize the vision of our citizens and what's going on. I think you guys are doing a great job leading that, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Lee, do you want to say anything?
Yes.
Okay, this is, this isn't a hearing, but you're sure welcome to, to make comments.
She's action.
Push. Ah, thank you. I'm Lee Bridges. I'm a resident of East Missoula. I've been there for 35 years. I'm a homeowner and stakeholder, as well as now the chairman of the East Missoula Community Council Board. We have worked for years with the county. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Christine, Karen, all of you guys have been fabulous to work with, and I will tell you that I have been a staunch opponent of zoning for the years I've lived in East Missoula. I live in the unzoned area of East Missoula, and thanks to the hard work that the county has done for these years that they've worked with us, they've been very creative and very resourceful and had a very listening ear for what we've had to say. We are very grateful, and because they've been willing to compromise and work with us, we're wanting to go forward with this project that they're bringing to you when it gets approved by the Planning Board. We are eager to go forward with it. I appreciate the fact that they educated us when they first approached us and let us know that this has been a growth plan that's been in place since 75 or something like that. That's a really outdated growth plan. I've been there since the early 80s. I have, I want to present to you a unique perspective. I'm also a founding member of our sewer board. We, a handful of us, for the commissioners that were here before you guys, and by the way, welcome, Josh, glad to see you in. But we were fighting annexation back in the 90s when Missoula City was trying to up their population numbers for federal funding. They looked at us and we said, uh-uh, and we approached the county commissioners and beat it by, by forming our sewer district. Well, what that has shown me personally, as an unzoned inhabitant of East Missoula, I've been on the sewer board for all these years, and in the last 15 years since we've had this sewer board, sewer-ing district and a sewer in place, our growth has grown exponentially. That has educated me personally, and also, what I've noticed is that we, as, what we did was, in, we implemented for our sewer-ing, we joined on to Missoula, the city of Missoula sewer-ing. That bought us time. We will be annexed. We realize that. We will be annexed, and I'm going to say that when our contract is up in 2023 for our sewer-ing, we are on a municipality for the city, they're going to be looking after us to come on to them, especially with all the new growth that we've had, another reason why we need a growth plan. But because of that, I'm very aware we will be annexed in the next five to 10 years. So, with that, I'm so appreciative of this program for helping us learn to dovetail into the city. I know that our unzoned areas, of course, when we're annexed into the city, into the city, it will be required that we are zoned. What we appreciate, and what I specifically appreciate, is the fact that the county has come to us and allowed us to creatively designate our own zoning ideas and listen to what our needs are, which is specifically the live make, which is fabulous. I've had people contact me, specifically me, people from Bonner who have called me and contacted me and thanked us for putting up, for you guys coming up with this live make designation. It's fabulous. I, I really feel that in an effort to keep the civil war from happening here in a public hearing in the future going forward, when we do get annexed, I think that what we're doing right now is going to make it dovetail so smoothly into a transition period of, of the annex, this annexation that is going to inevitably happen at East Missoula. I think by being able to coordinate and work with us cooperatively and listen to our needs, allowing us to designate our zoning, which is what you, you guys have essentially done in our opinion, it's going to help a lot when it does come to the annexation. Yeah, you're still going to have a fight, but you're not going to have the zoning fight on your hands. I do know, having lived there for 35 years, I know the shop owners out there, when he talks about the live, when Andrew was talking about the live make, he's talking about those of us who have our own businesses, cottage industries, to whatever extent we have them. In the past, with, if we were to be zoned as residential or have a city overlay on us, that would mean that those of us who have our shops, if we were to sell, sure, we would grandfather in, but as soon as we sell our property, it goes under the overlay of whatever the city would lay on us, and we would lose the value of our shops that we have in place. So, thanks to the creative program that you guys have been working so hard on for years and have done a fabulous job on, I just want to highly recommend that whatever they say and recommend for you guys to approve, please, please do. And I will be there as a strong advocate for what is going on, and I know the people out here, out in my neighborhood, who are very, very actively against being zoned, but it's only because they don't understand what we have ahead of us and how appropriate all this is. I will be a very strong supporter in what we're doing, and even though I was, was a staunch opponent to zoning for a, a great deal of time, I've now been educated as a result of this program, and I will take that education to all my friends and neighbors in our community and share that with them, and bring them cooperatively to the table for this. We love what's going on. Thank you so much. You might have some hiccups going on with, with what you're doing, maybe in Bonner or the Y or something, but we'll work through it. East Missoula is really excited with this plan. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. That's awesome. This is how government is supposed to work, so, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Lee.
It's nice to hear nice things. Anything else?
Yeah, just really quickly, Andrew, I had meant to ask you this earlier, is there anything particularly noteworthy that changed between the public working draft and the draft of the map that's going on to the Planning Board?
Noteworthy change? There weren't major significant changes. We received some comments from Fish Wildlife and Parks where they felt like their land should be included in open and resource, which is targeted for public lands, so we made that change. 3,000 acres were annexed. That was a big change.
I've got one. There was some public comment in Bonner to expand the live make designation, and so, that is reflected in this draft.
Yeah, Bonner got wind of what East Missoula came up with, and then they wanted it, was actually, West Riverside got wind of what East Missoula came up with, the live make, and wanted it for out there, too. So, we changed that.
My microphone died. Is there any other business to come before the commission? All right, with that, we'll adjourn. Thanks.
I know. But then, I'll-